Okay, thank you Anthony very much. So our next item is public comments and I just want to make sure that everyone knows that this portion is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any item which is on the study session agenda and no other business will be conducted. And so Anthony, you do have another little preamble of instructions?
I do. If anyone would like to make a public comment, if you've joined us by video link, you can use the participants button at the bottom of your screen. Click that and raise your hand. If you called in, you can dial star nine on your receiver and that will raise your hand or you can send a message through the chat to raise your hand. We do have a three minute time limit for public comments and I will post some instructions in the group chat for everyone to see shortly. At this time, does anyone have any public comments for an item that? No, I don't see anything. So Mayor with you.
Great. Thank you so much. We'll go on to our discussion item number three for consideration in developing a historical evaluation slash perseverance preservation program for the purposes of considering Mills Act contracts in town. And may I have a report? Stephanie, thank you for coming back one more time for this. We put you first up this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Council. So this afternoon staff is requesting council discussion in any direction in the consideration of establishing a program or guidelines that would be related to the historical evaluation of properties in town, requesting a Mills Act contract. Currently, the town does not have any such program or guidelines, only a historic artifact inventory that has identified historic structures and artifacts within town, none of which however are single family buildings. So just a bit summary of the Mills Act state law itself. So this law allows local jurisdictions to enter into an agreement with a private property owner of a qualified historic building to assure the preservation, restoration, or maintenance of that building's historical significance in exchange for property tax savings. So such activities could be things along the lines of repair or replacement of exterior finishes of the building or its roofing while maintaining its original appearance. It could be the maintenance of heritage trees or other landscaping or fencing on the property with historical significance or restoring windows to maintain their original aesthetics. So these agreements are called Mills Act contracts. They do run with the land, not the property owner and do last 10 years with an automatic renewal unless either that local jurisdiction or the property owner at the time elects not to re renew the agreement. So qualification for historical significance of a building is typically applied for by a property owner for registration at either a local, state, or federal level. As part of a Mills Act contract agreement, a specific schedule of improvements is required with such improvements required to be consistent with the state of California Secretary of Interior's adopted standards for rehabilitation of such qualified properties. So while the state, the state sets the standards to review such improvements against, a local jurisdiction however can establish its own criteria, the application process, the guidelines for an application to follow, as well as some of the contract terms in considering any potential Mills Act contract. So for example, as part of the terms of a Mills Act contract, while not mandated by state law, a local jurisdiction could negotiate terms of the contract to include a provision of allowing public tours of the historical property on a specified basis as part of an identified public benefit and again in exchange for the agreement to be issued. Another provision of Mills Act contracts is that the jurisdiction must require inspections of the property, usually prior to approval of a contract as well as post-contract agreement to assure that that identified schedule of improvements and its maintenance plan as noted in the approved contract are fulfilled. So these inspections could be at a minimum five year increments within again that 10 year minimum contract term, but could occur more frequently. And these inspections can be performed by that local jurisdiction planning or building staff, however, could also be performed by outside consultants, including preservation professionals or qualified preservation planners on behalf of that jurisdiction, but at the cost of the property owner. So effectively outsourcing those inspections to a qualified consultant. And as it relates to property tax savings for the property owner, the staff has found that those savings can be anywhere from approximately forty to sixty percent. The actual amount however will vary for each property and is determined by the, in our case, San Mateo County Assessor, which is subject to very strict specific guidelines that are established by the State Board of Equalization. They consider things as properties age, condition, and other assessment criteria. So while a jurisdiction cannot itself set or negotiate that tax savings, they can establish other guidelines that could effectively address a minimize to minimize the loss that that jurisdiction could incur. The way that a jurisdiction could do so, for example, would be limiting the amount of Mills Act contracts that could be allowed over a certain specified period of time. It could also limit the term of the agreement so that automatic re renewal after that 10 year timeframe is not just done by matter of course. It could also place a cap to the value that may have, that may have to be eligible for a Mills Act contract or a combination of some, all of those options or other means. So based on my conversation with some other San Mateo County jurisdictions that have historical preservation programs, they've informed me that the actual loss that those cities have occurred, financial loss that those cities have occurred from property value, property tax savings over the last 10 years or so has varied somewhere between the range of six hundred to two thousand dollars annually. So annually within that 10 year timeframe. So the benefit.
Yep. You said six hundred thousand to two hundred thousand or six hundred dollars?
Six hundred to two thousand dollars. So that was about the range that I've gotten. I spoke to Redwood City, San Carlos, and Menlo Park.
Okay, I just didn't know if I heard that right.
But that, but that's just their portion. So the county in total lost how much?
What?
You don't know?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Because that, that I think, you know, what we need to remember were eight percent. So yeah.
Yeah, but well, I just wanted to clarify so I, you know, get my thinking wrong. Go ahead.
So the benefit to property owners again is typically the tax saving, allowing such monies to be dedicated to the upkeep and the maintenance of that historic property. So for those jurisdictions that have an established or adopted historical preservation program and also have existing approved Mills Act contracts in place, some benefits they have found in doing such is to have historic preservation of buildings and enhancing their own local civic pride and the associated environment around that particular historic property as well as retaining a sense of place and continuity with their local jurisdictions, communities, historical past. If the council was to direct staff to further explore the topic, there would be staff time involved. This is estimated to include both staff and town council time in the preparation of a draft ordinance or program, the associated draft Mills Contract Act Agreement. And then of course attendance at and follow up from any public study sessions and hearings at either both or planning commission and or council levels. And then lastly, time could potentially also be spent for the future compliance inspections that I made mention of previously. So I am happy to answer any questions that the council may have and again ultimately looking for some direction as to whether or not to further explore this topic formally. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before Stephanie leaves, Stephanie, also those, once there's an application and the process that's already set, the applicant can be charged a fee to process the application and follow up inspections and such. So that's on a cost recovery basis for implementation. Is that correct?
That's correct. Cost recovery application.
Okay, does any member of the council, thank you so much Stephanie for the presentation is very thorough and for the staff report, which is also very thorough. Any member of the council have a clarified question at this time? I know Councilmember Widmer has one, any will have him and then any other member of the council. Thank you, Councilor Widmer.
Okay, so Stephanie, actually it was great report and you know, you answered a lot of the questions I went over earlier with George. So I do appreciate that and I appreciate the thoroughness. Does the county have a historian? That since we don't have, you know, an official historian, does the county have one that would go and appraise these and decide whether or not these, I, these facilities or these buildings are historic?
No, there's no San Mateo County, county staff that would do such. A property owner, should they want to explore electing their property as a registered historic property, either again at the state or federal level, would likely hire their own qualified professional historian who would go through the appropriate application channels or process depending on which registrar they went to try to register their property with.
And then a follow, a follow on question, it would be, you know, the qualification. Now it says qualification could be you're in the national register, you can be in the county or state register or local. So you know, we don't have a register and you know, it would seem that there needs to be, since this is all qualifying and things like that. You know, we would have to set that up. Is that set true?
The town would not have to necessarily qualify a property at its own local level. For example, the property at one, two, three, A Street could go through the, the process at either the state and or federal level, obtain that certification and then come back to the town if the town had an established program to evaluate it.
Okay. And then, and then my last question at this point in time would be, since the savings, the, the tax savings are implied to be so that the owner would be doing upkeep and be using artisans to do the work, the period work that needs to be done. Can you ask the owner to, to actually put in at least a percentage of that certain savings into it on an annual basis and present us a plan of what they're going to do? And you know, things like that, you know, is there some way that there, there can be the obligation, you okay, you're saving this much money on your property tax, it wouldn't be six hundred dollars, obviously. It would be, you know, substantial amount depending on, on if they just recently bought the house. You know, it could be a substantial amount of money. And especially the way that they're calculating it with you looking at it as a rental property, which didn't make any sense to me.
Your question, your question.
My question is, can we apply and require them to, to spend a specific amount of the savings on an annual basis?
So the town as part of a Mills Act contract agreement, there is a requirement that a, a preservation and maintenance plan with specificity, both in timeframe and specific nature of the work is included. In terms of the ratio of that, those particular activities, again, that need to be determined to be in line with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. If we can attach a monetary amount to that, I don't believe so. Mona, I don't know if you have any insight on that. It would just.
No, I, yeah, I agree with that. I think that exceeds the parameters of the law that pertains to the Mill Act and so we wouldn't be able to do that.
Okay. All right. Thanks a lot.
Any other member want to ask a question to staff about this at this point? Seeing that, I'll open it up to the public. I do see that we do have several members of the public and this is your time to speak on this issue and to ask staff any questions or make any comments.
Hi, this is Anthony Suber, Town City Clerk. So I see that we have one hand raises for Zach. I'm just going to remind everybody that if you would like to make a public comment, you can do so by clicking participants at the bottom of your screen. If you've joined us by Zoom link. If not, you can press star nine on your receiver. If you've dialed in, I'm going to repost that into the chat while I give Zach the floor. Zach, you have the floor. We do have a three minute clock for you and I'll be running that and I'll, I'll give you a kind of a one minute warning.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, council, thanks for the opportunity to speak on this. I'm actually coaching my son's baseball team simultaneously. So I apologize if there is a lot of craziness in the background. Just wanted to speak in support of the, of the Mills Act and I thought that that was a really great report, very, very specific and being a homeowner in Atherton with a home that was built in the late eighteen hundreds, I was shocked to learn when I finally saw that home in person that it was not categorized as historic and somebody could therefore tear the house down. And we're seeing it all too often. I happen to be in the real estate business. So I'm working with a lot of people that are looking at homes all across the board. And one of the things that deters people from buying older properties is the maintenance, specifically if their properties are, you know, over a hundred years old. So something like the Mills Act would, would, would definitely contribute to helping everyone want to, you know, maintain the fabric of our history in our great town. You know, as a lot of people remember, this is where a lot of the first people settled from San Francisco coming down the peninsula. So we, Atherton does have a very rich history and some architectural gems. And to watch them go away over the last 10, 20 years has been, has been challenging. So I'm, I'm a believer that this will help ensure that we remember, you know, Atherton's great history and lineage and will incentivize people to keep old structures as the cost to maintain them will be a little bit more affordable. And it's, it's really important to note as somebody who's been through this and has the experience of maintaining these older houses. This is, we're talking about a fraction of the cost to maintain these is what the Mills Act would be delivering and the cost savings. So it's also important for, for anyone out there that's listening. This is not a mandate on creating a historic list for the city of Atherton. This is not anything other than a homeowner volunteering to make their home historic and then apply for the Mills Act as a result. So this isn't going to hurt anyone's property rights, which I think Atherton does a really good job of preserving. This is totally on an election homeowner elected basis. So just wanted to express my support. We would definitely be excited to apply for the Mills Act if it ever were to be adopted by the city. And I think, you know, why we, why we would be the only city on the peninsula, more or less that does not have a Mills Act in place would be confusing to me. So I just wanted to express my support and thanks for the time. Really appreciate it and great report, Stephanie.
Thank you, Zach. Would you be interested in sharing your last name with us?
Sure. Trailer, T R A I L E R. And I live at one, five, one Laurel Street. Mr. Greenlee was kind enough to, to sell his, his, his family home of 80 years to me and my family and we're excited to be there and, and maintain the structure with or without the Mills Act, but it sure would be a lot less burdensome if, if we had some some Mills Act in, in place, just like most of the other cities across the California, Northern California region.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I, can I ask you a question? Are you, have you made any application to put your house on the historical register at all?
I, I've been told we've consulted with the appropriate party. So the way that would work is you, you basically you hire a company. Third party architectural resources report would then be generated and they would determine whether or not they believe you're eligible as a third party. We've been told that we would be. And so, you know, there's, and we're probably going to do it either way, quite frankly, but there's not, there's not a lot of incentive to do it financially. So it would be more for the love of the, the structure, of course, and we're probably going to do it either way. But yes, we've explored it. We have not made it official. We're kind of hoping that you guys are going to at least take the next step to see what this would be like before we made those decisions.
But my, my understanding of the process is that the homeowner, it's on the homeowner's responsibility to put their house into the category of a historical property. And then the town would designate that into, I don't think the town is going to, well, I, I don't know what their town is going to do. I know that in Palo Alto, historical overlays in a lot of the commercial districts in the downtown area and the entire city of Palo Alto, unless they've changed it since I was doing real estate there twenty years ago, is not a historical overlay.
Yeah. So I have a lot of experience with the city of Palo Alto with regards to historical properties. I've owned a bunch of them and I've sold a lot of them. And we've also had to run through processes where if, you know, in Palo Alto, they did a big project, a big study about 20 years ago and they didn't get around to evaluating all of the properties that they wanted to because they of course ran out of money. It's a challenging costly process. So they deemed what's called, they deemed potentially eligible for historic for the ones they couldn't evaluate. So a process like that is essentially it's deemed historic until you prove that it's not. And that's when you go to a company like Page and Turnbull, which we've done this year on a couple of different properties to third party analyze whether they are or not in fact historic. So there is a process and you have to engage a third party at this point if the city does not already acknowledge the property as historic.
Okay. Well, that's, that's interesting. Stephanie, do you think that that's an adequate process? Process that you would be familiar with?
I, I think that would be at the direction of the council. I, the council does not have to adopt, for example, a historic overlay district in order for a Mills Act contract to be considered in the future in the town. However, there does need to be some type of established policy document and ordinance to review such requests against.
Okay. Yeah. So, so that would be like the first step. It wouldn't be that we would just do a blanket overlay and make the whole town.
That would not be a requirement to consider a future Mills Act contract.
Okay. Well, let's open it up to more questions from the public. I see that there are other members of the public and now's your time to speak. So I would love to hear from any of you.
I see, Mr., yeah, Mr. Greenlee, I'd just like to announce for the record that Councilmember DeGolia is also, has joined the meeting.
Ah, welcome, Councilmember DeGolia. Sorry, we had to start without you.
No problem. My phone died.
Oh dear. Okay, Mr. Greenlee, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you, council. And thank you very much. Stephanie clarified that very, very well. I simply have two things to say. One is that in November of nineteen seventy, my wife and I bought the one fifty one Laurel Street from her parents who are living in Paris. And I saved it by one day from being bulldozed.
Oh my.
My mother-in-law was literally in the taxi to fly to a closing. Thank God we didn't have DocuSign at the time. I can also attest to the fact that it takes a hundred grand a year minimum to run that place, minimum to run that place. And, and third, from my not frequent visits, but my several visits to it, it is very clear to me on a personal basis that Zach loves the property and he is willing to put the energy and dollars into maintaining it in a strict manner that a person of his means and perspective can do. And I, I, I thank him for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public have something to say on this issue, a question to staff or to any comment? So please speak up now. I see we do have some other members of the public who might be interested in doing that.
And again, this is Anthony, but if anybody would like to make a comment, I've mentioned it a few times, use the participants button and raise your hand if you're joined by link or dial star nine on your receiver. If you've joined by phone, but I don't see any other members with their hands raised in there.
Madam Mayor, I hate to put anybody on the spot, but I do think Marion Oster's on the phone.
Well, Vice Mayor, thank you very much for calling her out. I would think that I really tried open-handedly.
Marion, sorry if you didn't want to say anything.
She's not going to do it. Well, I, I would just like to say that I know that Marion Oster, who's our, you know, our Atherton Heritage, Marion, you're going to say something. Yes, now.
No, I, I wasn't going to say anything. And some of you know, that's very difficult for me to do, but I was not aware that this was going to be coming up before the meeting tonight. I do have some old listings of homes that in the eighties were considered to be historic in the town of Atherton. Many of them are, are gone, but I could probably pull out that list if, if it became an interest to the town.
I think that might be a good thing to do and you could just send that off to the city manager. And it's something that's one of my questions I was going to raise later about how many residential properties do we think are a potential in the town since there's been so much redevelopment over the last 10 to 20 years? So that's something that we maybe, it would be helpful. But I know how involved you were with the ninety eight Alejandro property that got moved, that was saved from the wrecking ball on Isabella and my cross the street neighbor cut it in half and moved it to her property. It was great that she had a two acre property to put it on with their other home. And it's now, you know, it's really, it's a marvelous restoration. And to my understanding, it is on, it's, it's on our list. Is that not correct, correct?
It's on our, it's on the list. The list really goes, deals with homes before the incorporation of the town. So their homes prior to nineteen twenty-three. I, I would not, I wouldn't guess that there are that many homes that qualify on that list. But there are, we do have homes, Eichler homes that maybe would qualify to be historic in other ways than, than the age.
That would just have to be the burden of the resident.
The homeowner.
Yeah, with the qualification on that. Okay. Yeah. Um, you're welcome. Thank you, Marion, for being here and adding your voice to this because it's very important. Any other member of the public, I'll close public comment and turn it back over to our council members for their questions and comments and opinions. Who wants to go first? I think we lost Councilmember DeGolia.
No, I'm here.
Okay. Would you like to weigh in on this?
Well, I think that it's good to recognize historical properties and I know the one fifty one Laurel property. I've been through it several times. It's an absolutely terrific property. I, I was extremely worried when it was put up for sale and very happy that Zach Trainer bought it, given his experience and his ability to preserve it. I support the idea of a Mills Act. My biggest concern is, you know, we're, our staff is extremely limited. I don't think we have the capability to put a comprehensive program together and I'm not sure we have the need for that. But I think that we could deal with recognizing properties that are interested in the Mills Act benefits, which essentially results in putting tax dollars that would otherwise be paid in tax into preserving the properties. And I think we could deal with that on a one-off basis. I, I personally am supportive of this and, and of benefiting one fifty one Laurel so that it'll be preserved. I think it's a terrific property and definitely worth preserving.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hawkins Man Malian. How are you doing?
I, I am very much in favor of this. I wish I'd heard about this 20 years ago when I first moved to Atherton. I lived in a historic house that was originally subdivided into two acre lots, but it was 10 up to 20 acres originally. It had will, it had made call buttons and historic fur vaults, all that. When we sold it, the people behind us just totally took all of that out and destroyed it. It broke my heart and I didn't know that this was even a thing that you could try to preserve stuff. So I think it's, it's awesome and there aren't that many properties left and I think we should do. I don't, from what Stephanie said, it doesn't sound like a big financial burden to us. And since it's not a huge number of things, I, I am personally in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Widmer.
Yeah. So first off, I'm, I'm in favor of doing it and like, like Rick, I'm concerned how much it's going to cost, but of course we can recover some of that cost by.
But of course, we can recover some of that cost by, by setting, you know, fees for how we're gonna do it and how, you know, how much we're gonna charge for these ongoing inspections and things like that. So, so I think that in the, in the long run, I think, you know, the cost of developing this, you know, we'll, we'll be able to cover. I think that the Belvedere one that we looked at, at the last study session, if you remember, this is the second time we've looked at it, they put a cap on how much they would agree. And Stephanie pointed out, you know, you could put a cap on each occurrence or how much total for the town. I do think that we should have some sort of cap for the property tax value that we would lose. So we would have to propagate that up because, you know, we don't get all the dollars. But I think we should, we should put a cap on, on that. And I think, you know, as Stephanie mentioned, I think there should be some sort of way that we can ask people that, you know, one day a year or one day every two years or something like that, there could be some public tours to at least see the outsides of these facilities, not necessarily trampling through their houses, but see the outside and, you know, and enjoy the history. You know, Zach's houses and, and William's house, you know, William did a, was spending a lot of time renewing the house and it looked great and so did his carriage house look great. So, you know, people should see that. And, and on his house, you know, it's on a flag lot, no one can see it. So it's not like it, at Flood Circle where they, they've made, made up, you know, openings so people can view the statues and things like that. So the public should get some benefit out of it. But I do think that we need to preserve some of the older houses that are here because the history just goes away. And so I'm in favor of moving forward and, and building an ordinance and taking a peek at it. And I think we could use the Redwood City one. I read that, it's very, very comprehensive.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Good, okay. You know, I, I wanna just add real quickly that, Marion, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the Watkins Carton House, when they got their designation, I know that Rhoda, you know, they, when they landscaped, they essentially made a little pad out in front of the house with the, an opening in the landscape area so people could come and peer through the landscaping to see the house. So I think that is kind of a requirement, you know, that the National Historic Register will put on the homeowner to do that. But Marion?
I don't know if it's a requirement, but I know Rhoda felt very, very strongly that, that the historic value of the house should be enjoyed by others. And I know even with the flood fountain on my property, we felt that people didn't even know it was here and that it was, it's an important part of the history of the town. So I'm sure that's something that could be written into, to any ordinance.
The Atherton ordinance itself, okay. Mike? Uh, you're muted.
I was really saying brilliant things too. The, I was gonna say, I think the question before us is just whether to take it to the next step at this point. And I, and it, so I'd be definitely in favor of taking it to the next step. I do have a couple of, of concerns. If, if there's only one or two properties, I would worry about it because in effect, you're giving a gift of public resource at some point in the resale. The resale value of the property goes up and we know that. So I, it just makes me slightly uncomfortable. I'd feel better if it was more widely applied. But I, I'm absolutely in favor of taking it to the next step. And I, I think the history of the town's very important and I'm really glad that, you know, people like Zach are coming in and putting the time and effort into, into maintaining this process.
Thank you. So, um, I, on our staff report and the list of other historic property is, have, there's a number of historic buildings and things that the town has that would, could be affected also. Although we don't pay property tax on these, so we would not get the forty, sixty percent reduction in property tax. What benefit would it be for the town to, well, I know we did the, the carriage house.
And, and the tower, and the tower.
The water tower, yeah. So it's, it would be, I think, I don't know. It just seems like if we're gonna open it up for the residents, we should, you know, put our, do what we say and, and.
But I, I don't think it's a Mills Act issue. I, I think, why, only private property subject to the Mills Act. Correct, correct.
Or commercial property, private property. Okay, right, not.
But not the town. So I think we're only discussing private property right now.
Okay, all right. So is that enough direction? Do we, we're not gonna take a motion on this?
That's correct. We just needed some direction and I think the city attorney and planning department have that.
Right.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, William. Thank you, Zach Trailer. Thank you, Marion. Thank you all for coming and we'll see what we're gonna do to make it better in our historic town. We have gates and we have on private property with that, you know, fences and pillars and things like that. Would those also qualify?
Yes, those could be categorized as part of the historic property, landscaping, trees. Sorry, my gardeners, I'm gonna mute it.
Okay, all right, all right. Going on, let's go on to our item number four, which is Robert Barone. It's our fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two budget kickoff and overview. And I must say that I think, by William, our city manager did a great summary on it that he sent in his blog.
Came from Robert's report.
So what?
I said it came from Robert.
It's a cut and paste.
It's a cut and paste.
Put credit for it, I thanked you and you said, oh yes, thank you, bud.
In public, I'm saying it was Robert.
All right, Robert, make it quick.
It's all good. Thank you, Mayor, and council members of the public. Ah, yes, before you, is the, the budget kickoff and overview. This is the first meeting of our fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget cycle. This is not a detail, instead, just focus on a recap of the current fiscal year, twenty twenty-one, projected fiscal condition, preliminary budget, major revenue sources in five-year forecast, major expenditure categories in a five-year forecast and then budget process and discussion and the budget calendar. Next slide. Sorry. And, and just to recap, mid-year staff had presented the twenty twenty-one general fund revenues. We're projected at sixteen point eight million. With the E-RAT that's of one point eight million, the revenue is eighteen point seven five million, to expenditures of fifteen point three million. We also have debt service of eight hundred thirty-seven and it projects an excess revenue of over expenditure of two point five nine million. So projected year-end fund balance for fiscal year twenty twenty-one is estimated at twenty-three million six hundred sixty-five thousand. And we'll see that in this next slide. Okay. So the fund balance and reserves, the town is going to meet its, its estimated reserves. The reserve requirements for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And we project an unallocated balance of required reserves, that is, a hundred and sixteen percent of adjusted expenditures. So just wanted to reiterate that with the required reserves, they are one-time each year and they are not cumulative. So our fifteen percent emergency reserves based off of our twenty twenty-one expenditures is two point two million. Our twenty percent contingency reserves, three million. As you can see, we meet a reserve requirement of five point three million. Less those reserves, we have a general fund unallocated reserve balance of eighteen point three million. And then this eighteen point three million, five hundred and five thousand is the capital facilities replacement reserve fund that's included in that eighteen point three million. Next slide. So the next, just again, again, our major general fund expenditures, major revenue resources are property tax, building rent, fees and E-RAT. Again, property tax comprises seventy percent of our general fund revenue. Building fees is nine percent of general fund revenue and E-RAT is seven percent of general fund revenue. Next slide. So just to kind of recap, the general fund major revenue sources, five-year forecast, wanted to show you that the property taxes, building fees, E-RAT, total revenues that begin the forecast is fifteen point one million to seventeen point one million at, at the end of our five-year forecast. In the forecast, property taxes are projected at three point five percent to four percent. They're four percent in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Building fees are projected at two percent and E-RAT is projected approximately one point one to one million. And again, it's continued to be below the line revenue. Just the thing with E-RAT, the state continues to change the landscape of E-RAT on a semi-regular basis. Staff believes that it would be drastic interpretation to say that the town won't receive excess E-RAT anymore or in the future. However, the amount to be received is entirely unpredictable. So staff at this time recommends that E-RAT be set at one million in the forecast. And we continue, this will be a yearly budget review as far as E-RAT revenues and our expectations as we continue to collaborate with the county and other local governments and with the state guidelines. So the next slide is general fund, other resources, other revenue sources in the five-year forecast. These revenues are projected conservatively at one to two percent and are based or, or on historical amounts received in the past. And you can see in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, we have estimated three point one million to fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six of three point four million. And it ranges from self-tax to business license revenue, franchise fees and public works revenue. Next slide. As you can see, the major expenditures, just wanted to show you that of our departments in the general fund, the, the biggest expenditure component is the police department at fifty-four point seven percent. Our next department is the public works department at fifteen point nine percent. And just an estimate of all the other departments in relation to the general fund expenditures. Next slide. So just in the five-year forecast, the town has taken strides to reduce over the years. Its operational costs were feasible. With the town center project under construction, it's proven that we continue to manage, manage the costs as the, as the general fund bears the burden of, of these costs. So labor costs forecasted forward at two point five percent, four percent in the last two years in the forecast. Pension costs for the twenty-one, twenty-two year local miscellaneous, normal costs, pension costs is at eleven point zero six percent. In fiscal year twenty twenty-one, it's eleven point one nine percent. For local safety, for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, the estimate is at twenty-five point fifty-nine percent. I'm sorry, that was the typo on my end, but currently it's at twenty-five point fifty-four percent. Again, the actual amount is one less, one percent less for miscellaneous and three percent less for public safety. Also, we just wanted to kind of update the council on the OPEB. There's currently eight point one million in the trust on, on the town allocation of five million that we've contributed to the trust. Currently, the OPEB liability is at ten point four three million as of June thirty of two thousand twenty. And we have a net OPEB liability of two point three million. So that's the remaining amount of, based off the eight point one million in the trust account. Operational expenditures, as we continue to look and project our costs for the new town center, we're currently forecasting forwarded between four point five percent and three point five percent. Also, just wanted to update on the CalPERS UAL. The miscellaneous UAL payment for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two is four hundred thousand. Public safety is one point zero two nine million in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Next slide. So just wanted to point out that the significant component costs of operations for the town currently includes some service contracts and that includes the building contract, IT services, MCE, contract, contract conservative services, park events, planning services and legal services. And these are major components of our expenditures. Next slide. This is just a recap of what our projected five-year forecast is for UAL going forward. We are projecting one point four million in next fiscal year. By fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, the estimate is one point eight million. Again, the UAL amounts are invoiced at the beginning of each fiscal year. And currently in this fiscal year, we paid about one point one million. That includes three hundred and thirty thousand for miscellaneous and eight hundred and sixty thousand for public safety. And, and these forecasts are based off of our CalPERS actuary reports. Next slide. And I just want to reiterate on the general fund reserve balances. Are, we have a emergency reserve fifteen percent and operating reserve twenty percent. And these are both off of actual general fund operating expenditures. These are not cumulative, these are one-time and these are based off of our budgeted, our actual expenditures. Alluded to in the slide. Our unallocated fund balance, that's any remaining balance that's not reserved, committed or specifically assigned. So currently, as the council is aware, the unallocated fund balance to the general fund is being used for the town center, although it's not budgetarily assigned. So next slide is just the summary and forecast of where we at in the five-year forecast. This is just the total revenue with our salaries and expenditures. UAL component for CalPERS, our debt service, our town center was left to pay down on the town center and our COP call option. So you can see that in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, our net debt fund balance is a negative eleven point six million. Majority of that's the town center component. And then all the way down to fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, you can see one point nine million excess to the net fund balance. Again, E-RAT is included as major revenue. The above does not represent actual budget expenditures year-over-year. Again, that actual annual requirements will differ as we go through our budget process each year and oversee what our expenditure needs or, or council priorities are at the time.
And Robert, that COP.
Yes.
That COP call option is a payoff of the COP at year five, is that correct?
Correct, correct. That we have in our COP lease agreement to call option to pay it off in five years. So in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, that's the remaining, or the call option for us, the earliest that we can call. And that's the remaining four point seven million to call the bond of the seven point eight million bond. And then just to show you in the next slide, just to see how the flow through of the fund balance to projections. You can see that our estimated fund balance twenty-one, twenty-two is at twelve million without the reserve requirement. Our remaining allocated, unallocated fund balance is five point nine million. And it's just, you can see the flow through to fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six is at six point five million. Again, this does not include general fund allocations to capital projects beyond the town center project in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. So the unallocated five point nine million. Those amounts could be attributed to future capital projects for the town. Also, that's not included currently is the one-time, the payoff of the Bayfront Canal debt service that begins in December of this year of twenty-one. And it's, it's a five-year agreement and the amount is estimated of semi-annual payments of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, or about two hundred and ninety thousand. And those are reductions in our annual property tax revenue. As we get into the budget process, we'll, we'll update that, those numbers and reflect it as a deduction for this next fiscal year budget. What does include in here is the additional allocation to the building facilities capital reserve of the five hundred and five thousand per year. That's part of the user requirement that, that's flowing through as a reserve requirement. That's in addition to the fifteen percent and twenty percent. And again, the remaining unallocated fund balance is the rolling balance. So this unallocated is, is again, where the, this council can allocate towards capital projects or one-time projects or liabilities. And as we go forward, we can start, after we have the town center down, we can focus on other priorities. And then this just provides a, an update to of where we're at as far as. And then this just provides an update to where we're at as far as the budget calendar. So on April seventh, we'll have our operations budget. Our capital improvement budget, which we discussed at our May fifth study session. And then we'll have another study session on June second as a culmination of all our previous study sessions as we wrap up to hopefully adopt the budget by June sixteenth. Without that, if you have any further questions, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Robert. That's very thorough and thank you for the large print spreadsheets in our packet. I appreciate that very much. So open it up right now to any member of the council who has a question for Robert, Vice Mayor Lempres.
Yeah, Robert, I saw there's a reference to a net pension liability of seventeen point six million dollars. Is, is that an, is that, is that our unfunded pension obligation or what is our unfunded pension obligation at this point?
That currently is the, our net pension liability for our purse pension, correct? Then that was as of fiscal year nineteen twenty, that's the seventeen point one million.
So that colloquially, we could call it unfunded, that's an unfunded pension obligation?
Correct, correct.
Okay, can you put some context on that as to how much that that has been growing or what we could expect that to do in the future?
What was in the report we looked at?
I, I think it will, there's discussion that the pension liability will increase over the years to the extent of the amount. We don't, don't know yet. I think in two years from now, because of what happened with the COVID, we'll start to get that impact with the interest rate. Didn't meet the seven point seven percent interest rate this year, we're at four point seven percent. This year it increased, nineteen twenty it increased one point four million. The previous year, it only increased seventy five thousand. So there's indications that they will increase and it will be on the unfunded liability component. That's the invoiced amount that we get every year. That will show us where our increases will show up as far as the pension liability component. But it could be increasing, we just don't know to the extent.
Okay, Vice Mayor, you have more questions?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, I see Councilmember Widmer is ready.
Yeah, so Robert, addressing the previous question from the Vice Mayor. I believe that last time we met, we had this letter from the Finance Committee and they went through all the, all the gains over the period of time. And I thought that that was very, very complete and hopefully, so we can, we can refer back to that, I assume. It'd been nice also if they had included the OPEB in it, but that was fine. But that's, so Mike, Mike, that's, that's, you can look at that report again and that shows you how it increases all the time, right Top Gun?
Well, of course it's up there. Do you have a question, Councilmember Widmer, that you wanted to ask?
Yeah, I did. The question was, wasn't, wasn't all that information addressing what Mike's question was in the finance report that we just got just recently?
Correct, it did show, yeah, they did show the increases and it had increased about nine million since we had to record the net pension liability to our, on our financials. So in the course of this past several years, but again, in that document, it did explain that there was reasons for that. There's changes in demographics, changes in the discount rate, changes in asset allocation, changing in how they collect the unfunded liability to as invoiced payments of the UAL component. As we get into the budget processes, I can, I can identify that, what that increase was. But going forward, that's, that's what we do as we go forward in the finance committees. We try to anticipate and project what that unfunded liability could increase. And in the reports, it does show an estimate of how that would increase. But we can bring that back and highlight that in our budget study sessions going forward.
Thank you, Robert. Any other member of the council have a question for Robert at this time? No? No? I, I just, my question, it has to do with our reserves. When we years ago determined that we needed a fifteen percent emergency reserve and twenty percent operational reserve, do we feel that those are still adequate for the purpose in case of an emergency to operate our town? And how long would we be able to do that with the reserves that, at that percentage?
I think where we're at, I think we're at the middle of, probably right on par with what other agencies are doing. Having a thirty five percent reserves, I think is very healthy. We could increase it. However, I think having the fifteen percent emergency reserve and usually it's about two point three million and then the operation at twenty percent. So we have an emergency reserve of about, close to five million, depending on our expenditures. I think that what we have, it's, I think it's prudent in fiscal. Could we look in and see if maybe if we can reduce it maybe to, you know, instead of twenty, maybe fifteen, we could. But I think right now, even though with the town center, we've been able to maintain those reserves. I think that's something that we can look at. But I think having a thirty five percent reserve is, we're right on par and probably one of the leaders, I think, of agencies that have that high a reserve. Some just have fifteen percent reserve, some just have a ten percent reserve. We have, you know, two reserves, an emergency and an operation.
They may have more revenue than we do too, actually. But anyway, City Manager has his hand up, I think he wants to make a comment.
Yeah, just sometimes I ask questions even though I know the answer is just to let Robert answer them. Robert, what's our monthly outflow from the general fund on an average basis?
Oh, with, with the civic town center, probably a little bit over two million. Without the town center, probably about, probably about a million, one point, one point one million.
So a five million dollar reserve or so would last us about five or six months and then we wouldn't get any other revenue.
Right, because I think that when we first instituted it, we felt that we wanted about a six month question. And that's, that's what my, you know, question is. And with the new and larger facility and things like that, maybe you're gonna take my, I just wanted to ask the question. Okay, anyone else have any questions? If not, I'm gonna open it up to the public and see if any member of the public has anything to add to this report, this item.
At this time, I see that we have Virginia and Marion and Bob. So if either of you would like to make a comment, I think Virginia has her hand raised, I will give you the floor.
You're gonna ask a question about our budget kickoff overview?
That was accidental, sorry.
I don't think that that, yeah.
No, yeah, sorry guys.
All right, otherwise I don't see anything, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. So bringing it back to council for any further discussion, we're, this is an overview. We're not making any policy decisions at this point. Councilmember Widmer, your hand is up.
First, so, so Robert, thank you for the detailed information that you put in your report. So we're making comments. So a comment would be, and I've given this to George, is when you're showing us like next year's budget on the five year budget and things like that, where you're giving us the projections, it would be good if you'd give us where we sit today so that we can do some sort of comparison as opposed to having to continue to go back and forth. So just add a column and put, I'd appreciate it if you'd do that. Secondly, when you're talking in the, in the report about the, about our outstanding liabilities, you know, for the, for the PERS, I would, I think since, especially since we have a new council member, that we should put also the liability in there for the OPEB because, you know, that's our total outstanding liability, which we need to be able to show and make sure people are aware of that. Other things is that, you know, you show, you continue to show this 505 that we've agreed that we would go ahead and put towards the town center. So I don't know why it keeps showing up. And, and then, and then you've continued it and I realized at some point in time, we want to put in the capital reserve so that we don't have to raise fifty million dollars in fifty years, which, you know, so we're paying for today's building and the next building. But regardless, I don't think we should be doing the 505 after we get the building built until we pay off the COP. You know, our primary goal is to, you know, is to get out of debt ASAP. So we need to pay off this CLP and we need to pay off the one point three five million to the county, you know, as quickly as possible. So we, then we're gonna actually be very, very flush. And so at that time, we can make good decisions on how we want to spend it. Which capital reserves are a good thing. But my input to you is, you know, I thought that we, we've already supposedly said, put the 505 that was in that building reserve into, into the, into the fund so that we can pay for town. So it should be in the general fund now or the unallocated. Because this decision was made a year, year and a half ago. And then, and then you got the other comment, so I appreciate it. But I like the detail, I appreciate the write up, good job and love the jet.
Great, thank you so much.
Any other member of the council have anything to say at this point? If not, we'll close this item and we'll go on to the last item on our agenda, which is a discussion for the next steps on public outreach meeting, meetings for fire services. And City Manager Roderick's is going to speak on this. We don't have a staff report.
That's correct, just, I'm just looking for some feedback and direction. As you know, about a year ago this month, we had scheduled the public outreach meetings on the fire services study. And there was a publication that was sent out, a mailer that was sent out to the community that the council had reviewed. And then I think there also was some mistakes in that mailer in that it may not have reached all the residents. We sent it out to the post office, but it may not have reached them all. So we had that issue as well. But right after that, COVID hit. And so the council opted to cancel those public outreach meetings or postpone them. And then later on in the year, the fire services subcommittee was disbanded until the new year. And so now we're in the new year. And after our last city council meeting where we talked about fire services, there was a request that I consider rescheduling those public outreach meetings. So given that the, the timing was different with the flyer that had just come out, the makeup of the council is now a little bit different. And the direction with respect to who's gonna facilitate those meetings may change. I wanted to bring it to the council for some feedback on how to proceed.
Okay, all right. Any member of the council have a comment or a question? We'll just open this up for questions or comments or whatever it is that you want to talk about at this point.
I'll make a comment.
Sure. Councilmember Widmer?
Yeah, I, I know George said that he sent that thing out or gave it to the post office, but it didn't reach. Yeah, I've talked to a lot of residents and they never got it. I never got it. You know, I don't know if anybody on the council ever got it. So I don't think it really got sent out. So at a minimum, I think, you know, that was the first step. But just do some education, okay? Because there's been, there was at that time, a lot of information in the, in the, in the news. Now, I'm not, I don't think it's necessary for us to fan the flames again. I don't want to be in that position. I don't think the council wants to be in that position, but people may want to. But at some point in time, you know, people need to understand really how our tax dollars are spent and how their tax dollars are spent. And, and get a little bit more acquainted with the fire district itself. So, so I do think that there's still some outreach to be done. The timing, I don't know, we've got these guys already out there chatting and discussing some, some opportunities. So, you know, maybe wait and see, but, but I do think that the information, you know, my, my claim is that the information never got out. And the only thing that got out was that we said we were gonna do it, but we never did.
And I just wonder, in the face of the whole COVID, you know, turning our worlds upside down, whether or not, even if it had gotten to people's mailbox and pushing countertops, whether or not they were even, you know, wanting to focus on it at that moment. But anyway, other council members have things to say because I know that we should talk about this a little bit. Vice Mayor, did you want to say anything?
Um, I'm really curious to hear what other people have to say, to be honest with you. I feel like we, we said we were gonna do this, we started the process. I'd like to see the process continue. I don't have any real specifics about exactly when or how we should do it, but I think it's a good idea to keep the education going.
Councilmember Hawkins, do you have a thought on this?
I have a question. If we look at this now, what is our goal? What is the goal of the public education at this point? What will we try, what message are we trying to get out to the people or what information are we trying to pull from the public?
So I think that the initial thoughts were that in the whole discussion about fire services and the value received and things, people don't really understand the economics of it. And so just to start a public outreach with a flyer and then a town hall meeting and education and stuff. My, just, you know, and I agree that that still needs to be done because you talk to people and they don't truly understand. And it's a very complicated concept to kind of understand because it has to do with, you know, well, their, their tax dollars going one place. But, you know, if it doesn't go there, do they get it back? Because they say, well, how much do I get to save if we do this? And you go, well, anyway, but that, you know, that needs to be done. But anyway, Councilmember DeGoye, before I continue on with this, I just, you know, do you have something to say on this? I, because I could make my comments.
Well, I'm, I got the flyer that, that the town had sent out last year. So I, because I got it, I assumed other people have. Sounds like Bill didn't get it, so I assumed other people didn't get it. I think the idea of where does, do our tax dollars go? And what is the, the split up of our tax dollar is absolutely something that we should share with the public. And the, the whole issue around the fire services district began because George was putting together a summary of where our tax dollars go. I, I'm not sure that it's warranted to spend the focus on the fire services district the way that the Athertonian did. I don't agree with the, the perspective in the Athertonian. I don't think it should be sent out again. If we're gonna send out something, I think we should review it. And it, it should be an educational thing about where our tax dollars go. I have absolutely no problem with that, that's a good thing to do.
Okay, so my, my, I mean, I, I'm in total agreement with that. I was in total agreement before and I really think that that's something that our residents deserve. My, I feel very compatible with Councilmember Widmer's point of view that it's a matter of timing. And, you know, we're, we're kind of on a path now, which is a path that we really weren't on a year ago with the fire services and the joint meeting. And so I'd like to at least Uh, with the uh fire services and and the joint meeting. And uh, so I'd like to at least. Follow that uh line of thinking uh down so that we can at least have our meeting with the joint. Uh, uh, joint meeting with the fire services and you know, the discussions that are uh being planned. And and see how that goes and you know, just kind of finish that and kind of not maybe mix metaphors a little bit at this point. But at certainly, it's something that I really uh feel strongly that we should do. Um, but and and so I guess I'm going to open it up and ask Virginia point blank. Uh, do we have a date that set? Have we put together? Uh, a date um with uh the the two parties?
There. Uh, no, not that I know of. So the Fire Board is meeting on March eighth, which is next Monday. To um. Kind of look at what it wants to do with regard to putting items on on the agenda. I mean, pretty much. What the president and I, uh, you know, talked to uh council members to go yeah and Hawkins Manuelian about. At the agenda setting meeting or the. Ad hoc meeting. Um, I think we're pretty agreed on, but the Fire Board hasn't had a chance to discuss. Together um what we're going to do, not just for Atherton, but for other joint meetings as well. So we're going to have that meeting on. March the eighth. My understanding is that. These the scheduling of the joint meeting is happening, I'm assuming with the chief and your town manager. Sometime at the end of March or early April is that or it's not happening, George? I don't know, Mike.
Sorry, I didn't mean to head shake there. It is. It is happening. Uh, the last I talked to Harold. Uh, he said that the Fire Board wanted to move it out into April. Uh, so I tossed out a few dates, knowing the schedules of some of our council members. I tossed out the week of April fifteenth. Uh, but I haven't heard back on that. So.
Okay, okay, thanks. So that's kind of where we are. I think after the meeting that we are going to have, the Fire Board is going to have on March eighth. We'll have a better understanding, um, you know, for when we're going to do the schedule of joint meetings. But I I mean, I don't, I don't, there shouldn't be a delay. I think it's just a matter of coordination right now and speaking. To each other, between the town manager.
Yeah, it just, it just seems to me that um we're kind of on a roll here and let's, if we can. Uh, maybe table this um discussion until after that meeting and, you know, then uh see how we want to present it. And also I think that um having a town hall meeting, not just flyers. You all know that people get so many pieces of mail and their attention. You know, it's sometimes it sits and it doesn't get opened or it doesn't get read or you know, and um. And in any marketing campaign of any informational campaign, you have to do it. Over and over before it starts to penetrate. So um, that that would be my um. Wish my proposal to the council members if we can get some kind of feedback or agreement on that.
Elizabeth Mayor, um, I just, I think that in two thousand and fifteen, I think when. Council member to go was the mayor at the time and I was the president, we had a town hall or y'all had a town hall and we participated in it. So. You know, I'll bring that back to the Fire Board. On Monday to see if that's something. I mean, I'm sure that the chief would love to help with that and support that as well.
I think we have to get uh well from this covid thing and open up a little bit, you know, and so. We might be able to do some of our mailing. You know, our to kind of uh prepare. It's like, you know, prepare people for the, you know, getting into their consciousness. So that they will come and participate in a live town hall. And I think that would be very helpful and very informative. So I I see council member Widmer is very anxious to speak again.
Yeah, I I I think the town hall having something in person is great, but I think more people will come if it's a Zoom meeting. Because it's more convenient for them to attend. Uh, you know, we've seen that with some of the meetings we've had and and. You know, people, people will take the hour out to 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 listen in. And so maybe we could have something that's joint where we live stream it or something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my my two cents to you.
Whichever, however we do it and.
I I think we're we're mixing meetings here. I'm a little confused, I guess. I I think we have two things going on. We have this meeting with the fire district, which. We should have it is great and 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 is going to go on. I I think the the agenda for that is essentially a lot of status reports back and forth is is my understanding of where we are with that. The the meeting, I I think we, at least I was talking about originally was last year, we proposed to have a meeting specifically focused on. The spending um for the fire district and, you know, some of these estimates about how much our town residents are spending. Um, it in excess of what the value of the services they're receiving are.
That's the educational component to the.
Yes, but we had talked about it. I mean, when we started, that was going to be the purpose. That was the focus of a separate town hall itself. A series of community outreach meetings were going to be focused on that. The purpose of which Diana was to see if there was interest in the town of pursuing this, you know, if if indeed, whatever eighteen or twenty million dollars a year. Is being spent in excess of the services received. Do people care? And if they care, what do they want to do about it?
Right, right. And I guess what's the alternative?
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. Okay. Diana, did you have something to say on this?
I I didn't. So when you asked that question of what the alternatives are, we at the question of whether or not we're doing state. Looking at state legislation change, looking at detachment. There's, is that what we're talking about?
Well, you know, I I think that i- if you ask, you know. Are you happy doing this? I guess that could be a yes or no question, right? Are you happy with your fire services and happy uh that it's, you know, you're paying more than, you know, what is perceived that you're uh. Getting in return. Are you happy with that? And that would be, I guess, a yes or no answer. But then if it says. No, I'm not happy with it. You know, well, what's the alternative? So I mean, so that's why I said in the beginning. It's a complicated discussion and I'd really like to just kind of get through this first. Uh, quarter, second, you know, into the second quarter so that uh we finish. What we've been working towards with the joint meeting with the fire district and then, you know, see what else we're.
My my understanding of the answer to Diana's question was that we don't know Diana, right? It's it it. Is it worth? Should we pursue to see what the options are? Or should we just let it drop is sort of the the where we are? And because all the things we're talking about, there's nothing that we're talking in the fire district about that would come close to making up that delta. That our residents are spending. You know, we're talking about maybe a few hundred thousand dollars in benefit here and there. Not nothing approaching the fifteen to eighteen million dollars and that our citizens are spending in excess annually.
But isn't that an issue? Uh, forgive me, but isn't that a question of whether or not we change the state laws in our? Fight for change for fighting a state law?
It might be. It might be. It might be. It might not be.
Might be, it might. Yeah, exactly. There were alternatives in the report that we got from Matrix.
The but the alternatives are never articulated to the point where you can actually assess them. So I'm wondering if before we go to any public that we as a council discuss this again.
Yeah. Well. What can I, Rick?
Uh, I think the suggestion of having the joint meeting with the fire district. Um, before we go through this issue again, it is a good suggestion. And um, I'd like to have that. I I think that I think Mike's right that it's essentially going to be a series of status reports. Hopefully, coming out of that, there will be some discussion about things we can partner on. And again, I think Mike is right. It's. It's not a dr- that whatever that might be. Uh, to the extent that it benefits Atherton, uh, there's some real issues that could be beneficial to us, but it's. A drop in the bucket compared to the total dollars in tax that we're being that we're paying. Uh, but the reality is. That's probably true with other taxing agencies also. That we're we're paying a lot more in tax than we're getting benefit from. I mean, we haven't really looked at that uh in the specifics, but. My guess is that that's accurate, that. We pay a lot of tax.
Okay. Um. So I think we've had some discussion here. Um, it. City manager, do you have any direction? Is there anything that we need to do at this point?
So I I was just seeking direction and I think from from you and from council member to go yeah, and I think I saw a nodding head from council member Hawkins Benwellian. To have the fire. Uh, joint meeting first. And then return this conversation to the city council for next steps on public education and outreach and that and around the entire issue of the economics. Is that?
And I actually think that council member Widmer would agree with that and probably vice mayor also, just because it's not. Uh, saying that we're not going to do it, but I think we can. Continue and and refine our outreach uh marketing of the mailers so that they're very uh they're more uh informative. I personally felt that what went out before was um. Confusing at best. So. And it this is a, this is a marketing campaign of education. It's an educational marketing campaign. So.
Madam Mayor, since you called me, I I don't disagree with that um at all. I I'd say, though, it's it's a little troubling. It's taken us like three months to schedule a. Pretty simple meeting with our with our, you know, the fire district serves the town. It seems kind of silly, but we we should be able to get that straight.
I understand. Okay. Any uh, we're going to open up for the public for discussion um questions. I see we do have two members of the public and I have a feeling. Sneaky feeling they're they're from the finance committee.
Yeah, I believe Bob had his hand up too, but.
I gave him an opportunity to unmute Bob.
Uh, yeah, I almost got involved, but I I think you were all very diplomatic, maybe too diplomatic to cut to the. Gist of the issue, but it does make sense to me that we. If if you can make some progress at this joint meeting. That that would be more cooperation than we've had from the fire department. In my time involved. And um. If we can make even a little progress. In some amount of our excess. Contributions to the fire district being spent. For the good of the Atherton taxpayers. Uh, that would be wonderful. The 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 whole discussion of town meetings and education. Gets to the issue of whether the residents care if they're paying millions more than they should. For the great service we get from the fire district. And if they don't, the town council doesn't have any marching orders. But we can't get to that decision unless without. An education uh program and the involvement of the taxpayers. And unlike all of you. I can tell you that most Atherton taxpayers. Don't look at that kind of mail, don't attend those kind of meetings. Uh, whether they're in person or by Zoom. And it'd be very, very difficult to get a true um. A true uh sense of the pop of our populace. Unless there's some kind of formal referendum of some sort. So. It's a complicated issue as Elizabeth said, but. I I don't think it's one we should drop. There's too much money at stake.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. So I'll call on Anne since she's the only other person uh on the call if she has a comment. No? Okay.
I I'm sorry. No, no, I don't, but thank you for asking.
Okay, great. Okay, see, so uh I'm gonna um call the meeting adjourned and and I have. This is really going to be hard for me. Um, as you know, um. Today uh in the almanac, um, there um. Was a um, let me get rid of this. There there was an um obituary in the almanac online of um announcing. Malcolm Dudley's uh passing on February tenth. And um, we're just putting up here that um, since this is becoming public, that if you do want to make a donation in his name, we're going to adjourn. The meeting in his honor and his name. Uh, and if you um feel like reaching out to his family, because that um and his children. They live on Catalpa, you know, and uh, uh, he has requested that donations be made to these uh three charities. And everyone knows that Malcolm was uh bigger than life in Atherton. He um. I has the distinction of being the longest tenured. Council member and Rick, you're going to have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was twenty one years. Uh, three weeks and seven hours or something like that. He had it down to the.
Twenty four years, twenty four years, nine months.
Oh, okay.
And and one time I I was talking to him and I recognized him as having been the longest serving council member and I said. For twenty four years and he looked at me and he said, eighty four years, nine months.
There is, yeah, yeah, okay. So anyway. It was Malcolm. So I'm just, I I'm, it it saddens me to to uh recognize his passing. The other two uh residents that I'm going to call attention to, um, because their obituaries. Were in the uh almanac of this last week, the twenty seventh, the twenty sixth of February. Um, Ruth Seiler, um, a wonderful woman. Um. Uh, she passed away in February. She was the wife of Don Seiler and they had a a large. Uh, tax accounting firm called Seiler and Company up in Redwood Shores. But she was a wonderful woman and they were very um. Uh, wonderful, long term uh A- Atherton residents. And uh, they gave a lot of their charities to Ronald McDonald House. And to uh the Lucille Packard Foundation for Children. So uh, that is a very sad passing of Ruth uh Anne Seiler. Also, another uh tower of uh. Family in Atherton, Earl Seymour Douglas, if anyone uh remembers Earl meeting Earl Douglas. Uh, he could match Malcolm in his stature. He was a uh giant of a man and he was really a um. Uh, a a great Athertonian and um, he was also very involved with the preservation of what they're calling. Douglas Hall at Menlo School. He was a member of Douglas School, Menlo School when it was Victoria Manor. And but when the Loma Prieta earthquake uh happened in nineteen eighty nine, they were going to tear it down and he and I believe Lou Paponas's wife. Uh, they got the friends together and uh raised money to preserve it. So um, he passed away in November. So it's really sad that some of our residents who have contributed to the heritage of Atherton are passing. But I'd like to just take a minute and close this meeting in their honor. Thank you.
Great.
Well said, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, very well said. Malcolm was a giant. Douglas was very important and. Stories about both of them. I I have a quick council member report if I can do.
Oh, wait a minute. I have one more uh, just a second. So today was Meals on Wheels. And usually. The mayors and council members go over to Peninsula Volunteers and they drive around and deliver meals on wheels. Uh, former council member Weest and I were um uh. Doing that one year and we delivered meals on wheels to a neighbor of ours over here on Alena. Uh, Douglas Wolf. And so I was on the phone instead of delivering meals and wheels, I spent an hour with the Peninsula Volunteer and we called people. And she says, you know, I had a a a client of ours, Douglas Wolf. Uh, who, you know, I usually call a get wheel meals with, but he passed away. So. Within the last couple of days. And so another long term resident just down the street and he. Uh, passed away and he was not a very old uh man. He was, I think, in his uh late sixties or late seventies. So. But the Meals on Wheels, we we called people and uh, you know, talked to them and while their meal was being delivered. and while their meal was being delivered, but because of the COVID, the, uh, electeds could not. So anyway, that was a very interesting day. So Councilmember DeGoy, you have a council report.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a quick report on Peninsula Clean Energy, um, which, uh, is, there, there's a lot happening and I could give a long report, but I'll make it very brief. Uh, I was elected Chair of Peninsula Clean Energy, uh, this past week. Uh, Peninsula Clean Energy continues to do extremely well, although, uh, the, uh, state PUC has continued to support the exit fee, this PCIA fee that is paid to PG&E and now, uh, uh, equals approximately forty percent of our electricity bill. Uh, the, the fee went up thirty-five percent in January and will go up another seven percent, uh, is estimated this month in March. Uh, at the same time, uh, PG&E reduced its generation fee, which I think is appropriate because the, the generation costs are less. Uh, but, uh, both of those, uh, adversely impact Peninsula Clean Energy because we pay that exit fee for all of our customers. And in fact, our discount today, uh, while we formally have a five percent discount that we've maintained, almost every other CCA has reduced their discounts. And, uh, MCE, Marin Clean Energy and Sonoma, uh, currently have rates that are five percent above PG&E. Uh, we are the only CCA that retains a five percent discount and the closest to us at this point is a one percent discount. And we're evaluating whether to increase those fees or not. Uh, we've made a substantial number of cost reductions, uh, to avoid a fifty million dollar loss, which we otherwise would have incurred because of this PCIA increase. And we've introduced a bill in the state legislature to deal with this PCIA. Very, very big issue. Um, I could go into more detail on it, but, uh, the, the one other thing I would say that I just report on is, last year Peninsula Clean Energy came to us with a reach code proposal on reach codes that they went to every city in San Mateo County on. And, uh, now, uh, thirteen of the cities have adopted some form of reach code and five are continuing, uh, to evaluate it. And the only two that have opted out are Atherton and Woodside. Uh, and I would like to have us put on a future council agenda, uh, reconsideration of that because PCE has new information that I think could be quite interesting to us. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any other council member have a council report they'd like to give? Seeing none, we'll call this meeting adjourned and we'll see you on, um, St. Patrick's Day. Um, yeah, I get my second COVID shot on St.